Oh, yes, we do.
We have a call.
I am not heard from first by a commission.
All right, go with the start. All right, good evening. Well, a couple more. I'm the Chair of the City of Rotten, planning a zoning commission, and I'm calling our meeting for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five to order at six thirty-one P M. First item on the agenda is roll call, so I am here, Ms. Bergeron is here, Mr. Boris is here by Zoom, and Mr. Rust is here. First of all, before we go any further, I'd like to thank Bob for leading that October twenty-first meeting. He did a great job. And also like for the record to state that I watched the video of that meeting so that I could vote on the application. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. There are motion. Motion from Ms. Bergeron, and a second. Second from Mr. Boris. All right, any discussion? Does anybody have any changes or corrections? All right, the only thing I saw is that a header on the agenda at the top of the page. I think in zoning commission agenda. So that's the only, that's the only thing that I saw was up. And that's the, that's the one that I, that I had in mind, in my inbox. So an easy fix. Sue and Bob, you okay with a change?
Yeah, I'm good.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes from October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five as amended? Aye? Aye. Close? Tensions, like the minutes are through or you're on here. All right, next item is on the agenda, continuation of the public hearing for application site plan number five zero six, special permit number four seven six, lot combination number two five dash zero zero one L L R. This is D L C Engineering Services LLC for Zero Sacred Heart Drive, one forty aquatic road, and one fifty aquatic road. The application is to combine lots, instruct a multifamily structure consisting of twenty units, consolidate access, and repurpose unused buildings. This is a continuation of the public hearing that was originally opened on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. It was also continued on October twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. So you follow the same process as, as Mr. Boris laid out when he opened that, when you, you know, public hearing in, in October. And so that would be that the first person to speak would be the applicant, and I think there are some, there's some new, some updated claims that have been submitted. Is that correct? Wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so please. And remember, you read your name and filling your last name.
So I am Dave Pooley, owner and operator of D L C Engineering LLC. This is the affiliate, the property owner and my client. Got some hard copy plans here to pass out. I'm not going to bring them to England for you, Mr. Boris. I'd love to. They have been manually redlined. It has been printed by the time. Those are the questions. I'm going to walk through them real quick. You want one too? So just a brief summary of scope of the project. As mentioned, there's, there's multiple applications that have been filed. First, it's a lot line revision in that we have one forty aquatic road, one fifty aquatic road, and Zero Sacred Heart Drive that will be combined into one parcel. There is existing structure and use on one forty, which is primarily commercial space. There is one residential unit there and a multifamily residential building on one fifty aquatic road. Zero Sacred Heart Drive presently is vacant. So the first order of business is to combine those lots. And that paves the way for the other applications really, special permit, site plan approval, and zoning permit to develop the parcel with a parking lot and a multifamily residential building primarily in the footprint of existing Zero Sacred Heart Drive. So just to outline clearly the property lines on the survey. This is one forty aquatic road, which has frontage here, the western side, and a little access strip on the eastern side. This is one fifty aquatic road, and this is Zero Sacred Heart Drive. The existing uses, this is the, the commercial building, multifamily. And traffic flow wise, presently, there's a one-way entry here through a parking area here that I'll just call informal. And this is the one-way exit from that parking area, and there's a two-way access here to a, a crowd of the parking area, nine, one fifty aquatic road. So the lot line revision essentially repeats this property line right here, and this one. That combined parcel is just a few square feet short of an acre. That's not strategic. It just happened that way. So moving to sheet three. Well, I, I will note that on sheet two, we added a notation indicating which curb cuts will be eliminated in this project. Sheet three really shows what the development is and is proposed to be. As I mentioned, the multifamily residential structure on Zero Sacred Heart Drive is to the northeast corner of the, of the combined parcel. And there is a, a, a parking lot that's proposed, the total of forty-three spaces that will be paved. It will be curved. It will be provided with catch basins that all collect the impertuse area added to the development for rooftops and, and from the parking area and sends it into stormwater infiltration systems below the parking lot, which will overflow through a connection to a catch basin on Sacred Heart Drive. I'll get into that a little bit more in a sec. I did verify the building coverage percentage, and that is for the combined parcel and inclusive vaults, the proposed structures. I did add the impertuse area, which obviously is going to be increased with the paving of the, the parking lot and the condition of the building. So that's going from thirty-nine seventy-five.
That impertuse area of these that includes the building all for the whole set.
Whole set. The curb cuts to be removed are the two one-way entry and exit to the existing parcel, existing uses, and they will be removed and blended into the existing concrete part, curb and sidewalk that is on aquatic road. And a detail was added from the City of Rotten. Details and specifications. One thing about the construction easement that's highlighted on, on sheet three on the northwestern corner. I have tightened that in a little bit so that we can avoid the playground that is just beyond that fence line. I think we can avoid disturbing the fence and insert this stormwater pipe underneath the proposed retaining wall without really any disturbance to the, the school indoor church activities. Once it clears that curb, it's, it's on a public street, which is actually a dead end. Moving on through the sheets. If you go to sheet five, that shows in a little bit more detail, stormwater infiltration system that all the catch basins, all the impertuse area drain tube. We, we did soil testing on site, we did permeability testing. And surprisingly enough, there's not tremendous amount of fill on this site. It went straight to native material. And no bedrock, so and, and no ground one either. So like we're going to be nesting this in nice gray sand material. And under extreme storm conditions, the, the system does not irrigate everything. It overflows. So the overflow would be discharged through the back of the property to that connection to the catch basin on Sacred Heart Drive. I might add that the overflow low rate is less than the existing one hundred-year storm deep runoff rate. It is concentrated discharge. The, the over the overflow would be less under all storm conditions. I think that's some certainly some instance in the stormwater or, or.
Is this sewer you were going to bring?
Absolutely, yes. I, I can. The sewer and water, electric and telecom are all coming off of aquatic road. The sewer are invested visually steam on sheet eight. So the sewer comes out the front door of the building essentially. Pose them, comes to a manhole and in the middle of the property, and then out to another manhole that will be right at the sidewalk edge on aquatic road. That will be a drop manhole that will bring us down to the thirteen feet below grade that the sewer line is on aquatic road. And we went through City of Rotten, Rotten Utilities for all these utilities and got their endorsement throughout, including the connection, the stormwater connection to the catch base Sacred Heart. There's water lines for fire and domestic that connect to the water line that is in aquatic road and right next to the sewer line. Sewer line is over. Final revision though summarized here is on sheet eleven and per request from last meeting. The retaining wall that is just inside the property line that creates the level the level parking lot and the infiltration system underneath is, is created by this retaining wall, which is precast concrete blocks used and caps with a fence. The system is designed to incorporate a fence when desired at the top block. The nature of the fence has been redlined in the sheet, and what we did, a black vinyl chain fence, forty-two inch height and in compliance with the loading and so forth. That summarizes the changes that have been made very minor in nature. Some of the highlights, just of the, the, the project overall is really the benefits of organizing the traffic flow on site and organizing parking on site. Presently, there's a combination of you got old pavement and gravel and sand and brush. Not organized too much and even line striking or anything like that. There's also the propane tanks. It's really inhibited really any coherent flow of traffic in the back. And we're going to be burying that inside the retaining wall in the northwest corner of the, of property and hiding that from view. That presently is almost certain along that drive. We will, and organizing the traffic flow and parking, obviously, we're, we're going, bringing everything into a two-way access drive that is, is existing, but it's not being paved at this point. So we're making it a proper live paving it, putting in, vesting in sidewalk on, on side of it. And that will be the access to all three properties, the two existing and posed through that one, into egress and exit.
Where's this? Which page are you on?
Sheet three. Sidewalk is just on that, the western side of.
Yeah.
And like I said, we're, we're eliminating the use of the, the one ways in and out. They're both rather tight, and especially the one that flanks the longer that building. It's extremely tight, and, and it doesn't really have adequate recycling address, let alone. Really improving the safety and accessibility as well. So that's a quick summary of the nature of the projects, and if you have any questions, additional information necessary, we're open.
All right, thank you. There were, there were a, a few questions come. Look, in the previous hearing, and I think you've addressed most of them.
Okay.
There was the
The three conditions.
Yeah, quite the three. There was
Private survey.
Right, so the private survey, construction easement for the northwest drainage, and the question of the longstanding unofficial driveway on easement, right? Those three. And so you've addressed the, the drainage, and that's all on city property, correct?
That's all within the right of way to mine. I have not been led to believe from the city that it's not on the right.
But you, but you had a discussion with Riden Utilities about that, right?
This is actually the city that does the stormwater. And Heidi reviewed it, and, and I've been working with Leslie for quite some time to try to ascertain the nature of this, this right of way, because there's a sewer line that runs through this, like the church parking lot and into the existing Sacred Heart Drive. And we have not been given clarification as to whether or not that is a, a city right of way. Is it privately owned? But there was objection from the church, and we, we revised the drawings that instead of giving sewer service from that sewer main on the backside, we have turned to aquatic road to gain sewer service there. So this instruction easement is supported by the church. The church was present at the hearing last, last month. I know it's supported by the city, and the easement would include all parties necessary.
All right, thank you. So the, the result, the results of the private survey, that's Mr. Chen?
Yep, the Chen here for one forty, forty-six point road. Unfortunately, the survey guide is going through the process, and he's going over the drawing, so it's not here at the moment. But other than that, I'm probably just wondering about the one-way entrance of the closing that was requested from last time, and then the easement of the right side of right of there.
So one at a time. The first.
So the problem was the right side entry going in. As I said, that little corner piece, you said you were closing the sidewalk over there?
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's directly in front of my property where we do not wish that the sidewalk closed.
Well, the public sidewalk.
Yeah. Well, I want to, you know, be able to afford a car to park it, but that's where the end is all.
The last hearing, you discussed not restoring the curb cut there.
So to allow for that, that one off-street parking.
Yeah, if you, if you don't restore the or type, you're actually getting away.
If they do restore the curb cut, they're, they give away the off-street park. So does your second comment relate to Holden?
I was, I don't know what the decision of the, the driver on the right, because I was like, if there was the, the right side would be unnecessary if you have a driveway going into the back parking lot. You know, I'm just trying to figure out where the cars could be parked at.
So I, I, I put this on you as the private property owner to figure out how you're going to park cars on your property. But if you are desired, if you desire for us to not even touch this jog, we can just leave that. That's, you know, there is, is, is some sort of longstanding right of way that, that used, obviously, of both. We can leave this alone and just walk away. It's maybe less demo and construction. Are you, when you say this, what you're referring to? I, if
Yep.
That, leave that alone.
That little piece that I'm
We can get in concrete and, and don't restore the sidewalk curb cut there for the, the one forty-four aquatic. It still use that of for access to what amounts to a, a pretty good side, you want, own car off-street parking location. I think we're amenable to that.
I was just wondering, I was like, you know, well, if that was the, the thing, if it was in on, on the, the other side, the shared driveway, you know, I mean, I was like, I don't know which one, you know.
Well, I go back to, to you as the property owner, the representative of the property.
Because, well, I'm just saying, I was like, last time, I was just trying to request for the easement. I don't know what his decision is about that on the right side. If you have the right side, I wouldn't need the left.
As I recall, there's, there's no official.
No, I think on document, that's what that, yeah, so.
This crane was going to look into, you know, anything related to the, the longstanding historic verbal agreement, I'm sure.
So there's no supporting.
No, there's, there's right, nothing.
I think that would be the easiest, you know, that is, it's within your property lines.
Right, so just range arrangement.
Leave that.
Right side, yep.
Demo this?
If it's your side, yeah, your, do everything that side of your line. I'll keep my side.
Okay.
You know, that's where I get the answer from Mr. Bill, right? Because that we won't touch a property. Yeah, I was just, you know, because that's what I was requesting last time, and you say maybe consider about it. I don't know. I'm just, it's your decision. I don't know, I'm not. Yeah, but there's a line right here, right? It's right here in the middle of the driveway. That's what, yeah, that's what that is.
That's one end of the driveway, that's the other.
Correct, so that, that red line separates the two properties, so so really, it's right down the middle of the driveway, and it's a stick right in this corner here. So we'll leave half of this that's already asphalted, leave that if he wants to widen it, he can. There's plenty of room there. But on this side, we'll make it all grass, on my side. Make it grass and make it look nice.
I'm not going to get into the parking.
Well, he would have to widen his, his part of the driveway. There's plenty of room to widen it if he wanted to, yeah.
And you're just putting the drive on the other side? Two-way drive on the other side, on the far side.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for the, for the, for the project that, yeah.
That's on the west side of one, I'm sorry, the east side of one fifty.
Right.
The two-way driveway, yes, yes.
So as far as the curb cut goes.
You know, you could be leaving the curb cut at, for that little jog, right, the, the one on the, on the, on the, on the west side.
Yeah. So if, if Mr. Chen were to use the remaining asphalt and expand into his grass, he would need that curb cut to use that effectively to get off of those. Do you want both curb cuts for me?
Yeah, I was just saying, whatever on my side of mine, if he wants to take out his curb cut, that's fine. That's, you know, that will figure out now. Right, but yeah, I think you were saying, everything on his side, it's his decision, everything on my side, I'll just leave it.
I guess, I guess the situation that I think would be, that you'd want to avoid is if current curb cut spans property line, but. And, and the remaining part of this bilious property is not going to be grassed over, but you would have a heck of a time leaving Proquonic Road and going straight on your property without running over his grass. I'd hate for this to develop into a situation.
Well, that's not even that, it's, there's another raised wall on the front part that he knows. So it's like, there's another raised front part, it would have probably take out another whole retaining wall for that to happen.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's not even like the front, it's, you know.
Long as it's.
A lot of, like, there's a right triangle raised wall, it's not as flat. But there's a little retaining wall here. Yeah, right at the corner of that. But you've got plenty of room from this red line to his property here to put, take out maybe two feet of, maybe two, I think two feet, maybe three at the most of that retaining wall, which spans a whole, a whole rock, actually all two, both rock.
Right, but the curb cut.
He would make his own curb cut, half a curb cut, you know, to be, that way there will be never an issue, you know, going forward 200 years.
So you're gonna, so you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna close the curb cut that is on your, the.
On my side.
On your side of property line.
Yeah, okay.
So you're still gonna do that.
If you were going to put a new curb cut in, you will need.
The town.
From the public works, and so go, save it from yourself. Don't do anything without.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 just be engineering, whatever, what they have to do, their drawings. Yeah, so that's not an easy thing.
Yeah.
I, I think that that would be a good plan for your project to close up the curb cut that aligns with Mr. Phillips.
Right.
If there's no confusion, then no, no setup for.
It's a separate, yeah, right, it would be happy days.
Eliminate, do a partial curb cut.
Yeah, close up, close up the cut that, that aligns with his property, so that you're not setting his tenants up for.
Crossing over to his driveway. Probably go to half and then do it.
We can do that. You're agreeable to all that?
Yeah.
Keeping, keeping the job?
Yeah, yeah, because that's probably the only way before the driveway, you know, that's the only spot, part, you know, before the driveway gets done.
Okay, I mean, if we'd be agreeable to, I can hold him. He'll have the, he'll have the jog there.
Yeah, just for one car at a moment to park into it, yeah.
In front.
All right.
But just, just for the record, I mean, I was double checking the, the property lines here before the prior hearing, in between the two hearings. Double checked it with the land survey once again, pretty confident, and he's, he's stamping these as the property line. Very descriptive, not very.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of old ones like that, unfortunately. So, yeah, I mean, in, in the absence of any other evidence, I think we want to accept this as correct.
Yeah.
All right, we'll work from that. Yeah. Oh, I don't see the other questions. We were through my, so we confirmed with Pratt and Utilities that they're okay with the, with the, with the city, the, with the Northwest Stormwater connection, that's all set.
Yes.
That's been confirmed, construction easement, that's all, that's all on city property.
Yes. Isn't there a portion of that that cuts across Sacred Heart? No one's made amends to tell me otherwise, I have a big phone right away.
Okay.
Yeah, the Sacred Heart representative, I'm sure you watched the meeting.
Yeah.
Avoid disruption of playgrounds, this, this now avoids the disrupting effect.
Right, that was, that was his line of concern, right.
And we explicitly talked about this connection. Their, their primary concern with the sewer line connection that was previously.
Right, and you removed that.
We removed that, and he's okay with this going.
Okay. There were, the, Pratt and Utilities had a bunch of comments on that, there's an 18-odd comments on the site plan sheet. Have all those been addressed?
I don't think I've seen this, when, what date?
It was an, an 18th August. Sheet that was issued by Pratt and Utilities.
Except for sewer?
Yeah, that's it. This is the one from. Data reveal was eight, eighteen, twenty-five, and they had a series of comments that they. Water utility general comments, and what are you telling the general comments?
I don't know that I've seen that. I know I walk, I worked hand in hand with the sewer guys when we revised and went to Proquonic Road.
The email, when we use Doug on hunting.
Yes, Doug.
In October.
Yeah, and I'm very confident that they are comfortable with sewer connection. We really went through several iterations and discussions on that. The water utility, you know, I was working a long time ago, the season here, Pratt and Utilities on fire and domestic, and that was pretty straightforward, just coming in off of Proquonic Road. And we added, I added all of the general conditions and specifications from Pratt and Utilities for the oak water sewer to the application package, and all of the detailed drawings. Nine are all brought in. Leslie, are you aware of the comments and?
Okay. Well, Leslie, here's the.
Water utility.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it.
Uh, no. There's probably a copy in that.
No.
Let's just go off.
Well, did it say any, my list?
Oh, yes, that.
Believe that.
We're carrying the rest of this run, I don't think we've talked about. Talking about the site plan issue?
Yeah.
So I, I've not seen these comments until this very long.
All right, so, so we get to, to, I guess that they had them. Sure, and then, right, you, you and work with Pratt and Utilities to address all their comments, would be conditional.
I, I, I can, I can digest that.
James, it's all you are, it's, what you've done, and already, they have already addressed a lot of that, but just make that a condition of approval then.
Yeah.
With Pratt and Utilities to address all these unsatisfying needs.
And I, I think a lot of this might get into how things were laid out in the building, like how the meters are organized and so forth. But I don't see anything here that is concerning to me at all.
There's no show of stoppers there.
Right. I didn't run out of the, the room.
All right, so.
We're adding.
So we'll do, still, sadly, we can't.
I don't know where it came from, that. While you're out. Right?
Yes.
But that came out of somewhere.
Got it.
But I haven't seen any of that, luckily, so. Yeah, I guess.
So, the, um, was the only, only other question, was it, was the landscape plan accepted then?
Well, landscaping and, you know, this replacement project. We'll see any architecturals.
Well, the architecturals were, they're not part of this plan set, they were submitted prior to, you know, right here.
That was, okay, I mean, now if this is a full replacement set, or if it was.
Oh, it is a full replacement, the.
I'm looking at now, it's ten, landscape thing.
Yeah, this is, this is a little different, because we missed some of the original set.
There's, um, no, no, not the, not the landscaping, the architectural.
The architecturals have been submitted, there's one ended up there, and a full set of rendering.
But it was, okay, so it's, so the architectural from the last set of drawings that we got.
Yeah. They're still the same, they haven't.
So.
We'll look in.
Here's where my brain's, but I guess. I need a complete set with everything. Is the only difference, the architectural sheet?
I'm, I'm confused.
You're saying you need these, these pages that size, is that?
Well, it'd be helpful to have it all that size, but if those are not in here, unless I missed them, then I'll throw it twice.
No.
Okay, so here's what I'm concerned about. Is that I've got the older set of drawings that have some things that we, that we've changed. That's, the changes are included in the new set of drawings.
Yeah.
One of the gaps, right?
Yeah.
Those, but the new set of drawings is not complete, it doesn't have everything, so now I've got.
It has everything and every. And the architecturals were inserted into the binders as the application package, and they were, they were printed out in eleven by seventeen.
Yeah, like, yeah, sick, like, they would, like, ask for eight states, I think it.
There, yeah, there's, there's, there's the binders and that, there weren't any, any of you.
I think that's, I think that's, that is true. I was there, and it isn't.
Right, I have that, I was just telling, I was in the binders.
Yeah, I mean, if we could print them out, and, and put them together.
I, we don't have any elevation. The, all of them, I got one elevation.
But this, this is part of, I think, four sheets, I mean, this is showing the elevations in the building. Yeah, I, I acknowledge that it's not submitted, the original application, it was submitted prior to first meeting. The architectural.
Yes, I don't, I mean. What? So in order to be able to. There is. For our five, and for the reporting of the myar's that we approved, and so we depend. We need set of, and we can make it a conditional, but we don't want that, but we need a complete set. It doesn't have any drainage and it has everything. We get this up no longer part of the plan or not.
Yeah, because it's a minor, like, stuff like that. And some of the, the questions from GU that require indicating where certain valves are, yeah, that sort of thing. So you're saying, when, when those tweaks are made.
Yeah.
You, you would like the final issue of plan to have all the fold-out pages be together on one, in one side.
We, we can't do this by, I mean, we keep picking topics, but we have to require.
Yeah, I know, but you want like the, the civil site plan drawings and the architectural all down the same side. I'll give it to you, whatever, for that you want, and we'll put it all together, it's all PEB, so it's very great. You, you would only need enough copies for the goal of record keeping.
Myar's, me too.
You're too well.
You're not getting a my line.
We're down. Somebody write down whatever Jay explained what I meant.
I've addressed the water, the GU, water utility general comments, right? But we're, we're still in the phase of this. But we're, we're still in the phase of this, of hearing whether. Giving, uh, explanation by the, what, moving on, it's not. Um, no, I'm, I'm just trying to. Trying to stick your ball up. But, I'm going to have a handle on what, what. What the potential conditions will be, to make sure that we've got, we.
I, I'm tracking two conditions that I am prepared to articulate in the form of a motion. At some point, but we're not there yet.
Exactly, right.
But if I were to make a motion, I'm prepared to articulate two conditions, one is resolution of Brad utilities comments in the site review. And the other is final site plan. Include architectural drawings to be submitted together in the same format. Right, that's.
When you.
And the minor revisions relative to the curve cut?
Yes. Um, and when you print things. Wait until we get you the conditions of the rules, so that we can put it on.
I'm even gonna email you and say, do I have it all right, and then I'll send a different.
Okay, so I, I just, so we can, you know, we can move forward with this. But we're, so, so are you, I mean, are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? Bob, do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Alright, so anything, anything else, anything else from you? Jason? I'm lost it, okay, so, so. Leslie, you were, you were okay with the landscape plan, you know, it was submitted. So we're. I have one question about, Leslie, were, were you. Forty-three planned parking spaces, is that, is that, is that the requirement that's in your, of this.
The three extra.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, first of all, yeah, I'm sorry, I mean, that, that.
One thing. Double check. They're not, it's a big one. The charging station. You don't talk about. And you don't remember the ratio. But there is a requirement that you have. Charging station.
Or you've gone in spaces, parking spots?
Being a new state law, it's still written very. Buzzy. And there's, there's some. Reference to existing parking, that's like a delta, an increase of parking.
I'm not looking forward to doing this.
But to define, define how much, I mean, th- that's unknown, define how much parking is existing, and what, how much is being increased. I, I think it's fair to say that the increase is the new building, right?
Yeah.
But just apply that to the, to the new picture. Okay.
Another thing.
Alright, so, so to include charging stations is required by state. And, uh, but the, my question to you, Leslie, was that the number of, of parking spaces.
Yes.
Is acceptable based on. On.
We can't.
The number of units and the uses of the, the commercial uses of, of the one.
Yes.
One forty per quonic, right?
Yes.
That, that forty-three is acceptable.
Yes, can't require more than one space per unit until we get.
Okay, there's one, two bedroom. There's one, two bedroom.
That's back to.
Okay, so, so, and, and the, and the commercial uses also are.
Yes, that all that is.
That's, that's all included and that's all acceptable, okay, that's, I just wanted to confirm that that was the case. That, that was, so that, that was my, that was my only other. Only other question, so. Anybody else have anything? There's, is there anybody on the, on, on Zoom who would like to comment on the application?
You did, and that person. Someone indicated on the waiting room.
Oh.
There you go now.
Alright, so we, we heard from Mr., comments from Mr. Chen, correct? Is there, is there anybody on the, on the Zoom call who would like to comment on the application? No, okay, alright, so we have, so, so that's. We have all the, we have all the information that we need to close the public hearing, so.
Yes, you've asked for public.
Okay, I, I asked for any, any other public comments? And you've got any other comments from the applicant? We're all, I mean, we're all, I think we're, we've discussed what the, the conditions of approval will be, right? And so, when we, when we get to, we, so, we've closed the public hearing, then we'll, you know, then we'll, open deliberations, but. We have, we have all the information that we need in order to make a decision, that's, I just wanted to inform before we close the public hearing. There, anybody?
With, with the, with the known unknowns about resolution of GU comments, we, we know that's, that that's contained.
Right, I mean, so, so we, we'll just make that as a, you know, we, we know that, that those need to be ironed out, but. You know, need to, that doesn't have to. From our perspective, all, you know, what we, what we want to see is that, you know, we'll make that a condition that you've got, you worked with GU to get that on straight and out, but, and, you know.
We won't be able to get a building permit until they've signed off.
Right, well, so we'll have, we've got the, got that, the architectural drawings, the, uh. Final, we'll get the final curb cut condition, conditions into those, and also the, you know, include the charging station that we require. Also be that, you know, in terms of the closing of the public hearing. Move that up and.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Alright, motion to approve the, to close the public hearing from Mr. Ross.
Second.
Second, we've already got a second from Ms. Bergeron, so. Alright, any further discussion on that motion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, alright, so the motion is, close the public hearing is approved, four, zero, zero, alright. With just two deliberations, correct? And basically, we'll, there's going to be three motions here, correct?
Yeah.
One is the, it's a motion to approve, uh, lot combinations, right? And then there'll be a, a motion to approve site plan number five, zero, six, and that would have the, is that where the conditions would be, or would they be?
Go with the special permit, but the site plan and special permit, actually.
So we could use one, one.
One motion for the site plan, one motion for the special permit, and we'll put, that, we'll put the conditions of, over special.
Okay, so it would be, so, so, we've talked about the conditions of approval. Those don't apply to the motion to, to, um, to, of, the motion to. To approve the lot combination, or do they apply to, sorry, that, although, some of those.
So you need to do a lot more, a motion for the lot merger first. Um, and then a motion for the site plan.
Right.
And I would add that you're including the. You know what, you can.
The se, the second motion is for site plan and special permit, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it really, you could do it in one mark, in one motion.
With the site plan and special permit in one motion?
And include the, the.
But we could do both of those in one motion.
I move that we approve lot combination number two, five, dash, zero, zero, one, L, L, R.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion to approve. From Mr. Brusk, a second from Mr. Boris, alright, is there any further discussion on that motion? Alright, all those in favor of the motion to approve the lot combination number twenty-five, dash, zero, zero, what, L, L, R, you say aye.
Aye.
Alright, opposed, extensions, alright, so that motion is approved, four, zero, zero, alright. Then there's a motion to approve site plan number five, oh, six, and special permit number four, seven, six, which is construction of a twenty-unit multifamily structure that's all adding access. And repurposing existing buildings. The conditions, addressing the GU. Uh, water and wastewater utility general comments, uh, including a full set of architectural drawings. Uh, updating the site. Plan to, uh, uh, to address the curb cut revisions as discussed, and including the charging stations required by state law.
I move that we approve site plan number five, zero, six, and special permit number four, seven, six, structure of multifamily structure. A new combined property, uh, property number.
Do not, if there's something built on it and change your.
Okay, with the conditions that. Prior to permit being issued, Brad utility comments on the site plan review, including minor revisions, uh, such as curb cuts. And, uh, plan revisions included, that, and includes electric vehicle charging stations as required by Connecticut state law. And that final site plans as, as updated, and architectural plans are printed together in the same format for document.
Alright, this motion is our second. Second from Mr. Boris. Alright, any further discussion on the motion? Alright.
There's no, there's no. As long as those. Those revisions are updated to the satisfaction of Brad utilities, and the final package is reviewed for completeness by Ms. Crean, there, there's no reason to come back to the mission.
Agreed.
That's correct.
Alright. All those in favor of approving the motion to approve site plan number five, list six, and special permit number four, seven, six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and extensions, alright, that's, motion is approved, four, zero, zero. Alright, thank you. That's it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
That made me happy.
Alright, uh, next item would be the public hearing for site plan number five, zero, waste, special permit four, seventy-seven, January three, forty, can't hear that.
Put out, post December.
Okay, December. Alright, by law, if you have possible amendments, anybody have anything?
Only that, with the holidays coming up, it's, 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 you know, to believe. You know, I know we're not fully developed, but. Everything isn't, hasn't been passed month. And give me a full session. We may do a special.
You may do.
Special meeting. By the way, I think, not that. That is what we're trying.
As, um, oh, yeah, we can, we, okay, it's just, don't worry, you know, about, about time, right?
Yeah, I don't, you know, like, I, all week, I keep thinking, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, and the other things coming up.
As I tell you, you're, you're, by law, you're doing, you got to talk with law, so.
Thank you. My neighbor does it, doesn't he, us, himself?
Well, journey by. Alright, no, that's, that's fine, I, you know, I, I don't, I, I think that makes a lot sense, because the focus, the time we have, the, the highest priority. And that would be December, so it's, will be December sixteenth, correct?
Yeah.
Well, it's not, at least it's not, not Christmas. And, uh, so, so we'll put through the, uh, S L R International, let's face, application then. And with the public hearing. Discussion of House of Representatives, amendments.
That we can.
Talked about doing as a special. Rather than trying to. Work that into, um, uh, you know, six, seven, nine, so. Special meetings in December, is that, is that, you know, they want to January, or is that?
Whenever.
December. I mean, that's generally like this for people.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so when we get together in December, we'll talk about setting up a special meeting during, that way. As our, January meeting will be on, probably on. First.
Maybe on a Wednesday.
It'll be on Wednesday, if, if, London, oh, yeah. Um, alright, we can, we can talk about, in December, we can talk about, if you especially, in the first, first two weeks, in January. We'll dive on regulations.
Yeah, we can think of that, we also, um. Pardon?
No, no. Okay, so we'll, we'll get, at, at the December meeting, we'll look, I challenge, first couple, it's a January, you talked about. Executive session?
Yes.
Do you want?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so, um.
We'll go into executive, how did?
Me too.
Alright, motion from Mr. Brusk, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bergeron?
No, I did not say the purpose, the purpose is to discuss ongoing regulation.
Litigation.
Litigation.
All right. Okay.
Hold on.
Yeah, well, listen, all, all those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
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 All right. Four, zero, zero. Okay.
You're the bar.
All right, so are we still recording now?
Yes. Wait, did he go? Okay, I don't see anybody in the waiting room.
All right, so we're back.
Back. No decisions, no votes. So I do have one announcement, which is that, um, I will be retiring at the end of this year, actually, the end of January, technically, when. And we can talk more about this one-on-one, it's not really business thing, it's just a notification. I've had luck my time here, and you've done really good work, and I'm really proud of it, so. Um, the other thing is that, um, I am waiting to hear from Cameron to see if, if he's not here tonight, talked to him a few days ago. And it is possible that he is from, he's been out of state, so I'm waiting for a letter for him to confirm what's happening. Heads up for all of you, with all of that, um, with a new mayor, uh, she's very anxious to build vacancies on commissions, um, and she does have a clear understanding of the importance of planning and zoning, so, um, if anybody knows anybody who would be a good fit, um, please pass their name along either to me or to, um, or to the mayor. And my last thing is that it, I did have a meeting with, um, a couple of gentlemen who are working with Bill Bellitt, who was the developer for one twenty West Street, that, and, uh, that is, uh, that project maybe. It's, it would still have to get done, just to be clear, it would have to get done based upon the approvals that were given, and if they want to do something different, uh, which they're not exactly, they're not, if plans are changed, new things, maybe, then they may, um, that would have to, um, come back to the commission. So just to let you know that, the people who are interested in developing that area still, so, but that's good.
All right, anything else? Good?
And as you said, I have my first granddaughter, I'm very happy.
All right, motion to adjourn.
You want the motion?
I want the motion, yeah.
All right, um, the motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn from Ms. Bergeron, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Russ, all those in favor say aye.
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 Adjourn at seven fifty corner.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, take care, have a great week.
So.
Enjoy your time here.